Yes, the rain is fertilizer for goat heads, huh? Now, I've been on my hands and knees every morning, I go up there when it's got a heavy dew out there. All by the roots and stuff, but every time I do that, I'll go inside, then later on really I'll come back as, man, since I missed all those.
I bought some stuff to spray. Seems to be working, but still, they're everywhere.
Yeah, okay. Good evening, everyone. Notice hereby given the City Council of the City of Alpine, Texas will hold a regular meeting at 5:30 PM on Tuesday, August the 17th, 2021 at City Council Chambers at 803 West Holland Avenue and via Zoom conference in the Sea of Alpine, Texas. Meeting login details may be found at www.cityofalpine.com. This notice is posted pursuant to the Texas Open Media Act such as 551.043 Texas Government Code. Members of the audience will be provided an opportunity to address the council on any agenda item after determination of a form and proof of notice of the meeting. Zoom meeting guidelines and procedures may be found on the city website. Remarks will be limited to a total of three per person. Be speaking to the microphone at the podium and state your name and address for in-person attendance. When addressing the council, please introduce yourself by first and last name and state allowed the ward that you reside in or have a business interest in. For public comments made by virtual attendance, please email your name and the ward that you reside in or have a business interest in. For public comments made by virtual attendance, please email your name to the media moderator at g dot call it on at ci dot alpine dot tx dot us. If you do not live or own property in the City of Alpine, Texas, state that in your email, a petition, you have a petition or other information pertaining to your subject, please email it to the city secretary beforehand, the cities at city dot secretary at ci dot alpine dot tx dot us. State law jointly prohibits the council from discussing or taking any action on issues not included on the agenda. But if appropriate, the council may schedule a public for future discussion or refer the matter to staff. Though personal attacks on council members or city staff will be allowed. The mayor or city council members might call a point to order to stop personal attacks or immediate disruptions. If an individual continues to persist the attack, may elected official or staff member in a minute, they may be barred. All the speech ordered, please rise for the pledge. Okay, city secretary, do we have a corner?
Yes, Mayor, councillor, attendee is not present for an excused absence. Councillor Stokes is present via Zoom and councillor Rodriguez, councillor Sandatte, councillor Johnson and Mayor Ramos are present in city council chambers.
Okay.
The notice of this meeting was posted at 2 PM on August 13th.
Thank you, sir. Do you have anybody lined up for public comments?
I do, Dr. Avinash Ramla.
Okay.
I'm Avinash Shandra for Ward 1. Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Your turn. And everybody else in the audience. Mayor, I mean, I hate to do this thing at every meeting. As a copy of the charter. And we are going to talk about the site on 63. Public hearing to obtain citizen views and comments on the 2021 dash 2022 proposed budget. I understand the budget was prepared on the 12th or 10th. When was the budget prepared on the 10th? On the 11th? And I looked in the newspaper, there is no information about about the budget summary. According to the charter, which was modified last time in 2005. And budget. Is section 5.05. City council action on budget. The council shall publish in one or more newspapers of general circulation in the city. The general summary of the budget and a notice stating the times and places where copies of the message and budget are available for inspection by the public. Did we have that?
It was actually published and it's going to be published again. We left the, I don't, I don't.
Not in the newspaper.
I know I'm not supposed to answer him, I apologize.
Not in the newspaper.
After the meeting, I can follow up with you.
So if you're going to ask the public to make comments today, how does public know? How does public know? And I'm looking at a summary. I'll make some other comments later on. Let me know when my three minutes are up.
You have a minute and one minute left.
One minute, okay. I'm looking at the summary, the revenue. Corrected copy of Alpine Texas combined budget summaries. Proposed fiscal year 2020, 21 proposed. And the charter says comparative figures but actual and estimated income and expanded expenditures of the current fiscal year. Not proposed. This is what was proposed last year. But what are the actual avenues? And the actual expenditures? Otherwise, public had no idea what you're comparing with. You're comparing proposed budget last year or the current was $13 million, 13.638 million. And now we are proposing to spend 15.9495. But I need to know, just one second, I need to know what the actual revenue was this year. That we are proposing this coming years budget. And I have no idea. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Anybody else? Yes, sir.
Eric Stevens, Ward 5. I'd also like to talk to 6.3 on the agenda, the public hearing on the 2021 budget. One, I want to applaud that there is no new tax revenue, meaning keeping the taxes flat. And I also want to applaud that there's a $500,000 investment plan of the water treatment plant and the continued investments in streets. However, I have two major strategic concerns as well as a number of specific budget items. The first strategic concern is that inflation is rapidly increasing, 5.5% in this past month. Yet the most important city assets, city employees will only receive a 3% increase. Rumor has it that that would be an area of focus, but apparently not based upon the budget that's being proposed tonight. As a result, independent of the current issues, the employees will lose ground and leave the city. We've seen that happen before, and unless employees are properly taken care of on the financial side, they will seek work elsewhere because there are plenty of employers in town who want to hire people. The second point that I'd make is that the revenue matches expenses is because of a $1.2 million transfer from the reserves or balance fund to cover an 18 points, 18 and a half percent expenditure in the general fund. There is nothing in the budget document that was prepared and submitted by the city and put online that talks about the reserves or fund balance. Residents are not only entitled to see that information, but understand the impact of how rainy day funds are being spent on current year items and what level of reserves were made. Because at that spending level, I would predict the city will be out of money next year and have to either do one of two things. Increase taxes or reduce expenditures. There are a number of specific items in the document, one of which I agree with Avinash, the proposed budget document has little value because it is not up to date at all. So there's no comparison, even though the city charter requires that be there. Also noted that the city council is allocating a 20% increase to its discretionary use. Not a big number. In my view, it sends the wrong message. I would also talked about the hot fund budget is based upon using $280,000 of fund balance. Again, the question, how much is left? I hope that the council addressed the key strategic issues as well as a number of specific comments during the deliberation this evening and amend the proposed budget report.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else?
We have Lucia Scovelo on Zoom.
Okay.
Can y'all hear me?
Yes.
I just wanted to say, and this is in reference to one of the agenda items on Rod Poncton and council appointing him for a city council. I just wanted to say that he's, he did a great job.
Excuse me, could you please identify yourself and the ward you reside in?
Yes, it's Lucia Scovelo, Ward 4.
Thank you.
So I just wanted to say that I met Rod when he came the first time on city council. And he did a, he did a great job. He, he advised the council and the mayor on things that we needed help on. He has great experience and he's very knowledgeable in what he does. While nobody is perfect, he does know his, his job. So I hope that you all do consider and appoint him and put him back on city council. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Cuero. Anybody else?
Yeah, that's all.
Okay. All right, let's move on to presentations. I have one for Kristen Moody. She's not here. Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and read it. Certificate of honor and recognition hereby present to Kristen Moody on the 17th day of August 2021 for her 3.5 years of service to the City of Alpine Parks and Recreation Board. Presented by the Dallas Mayor of City of Alpine. And since she has chaired that board, she has done a terrific job along with her staff. A lot of changes to our parks, a lot of improvements. And our parks have been lacking for quite a while, but I want to just congratulate and thank you very much for that. So we can get that there. Okay, I don't have a report. City attorney.
I don't have a report for the council tonight.
Okay, city manager.
I am gonna wait until next month and give you guys a bunch of information.
Okay.
I wanted the departments to do their thing.
Okay, city staff report or updates rather. And we have Chris Rujia.
Hello there. So I have some slides for you. My name is Chris Rujia. I'm the tourism director. Thank you all for your time and attention. I appreciate it. For everyone's information, I submit a written quarterly report to the council. And if anyone's interested in the comprehensive record of what we're doing in tourism, you can find that in the council packets that are on the city's website. If you can't find it, you can email me, chris@visitalpine tx dot com. I'm happy to share that information with anyone. Can we go to the next slide, please? So first off, I wanted to keep you apprised of the hotel occupancy records. These are always kind of lag. This is the reports that we get from the state. And I wanted to show you over time, this is kind of a one back, please. This is sort of a snapshot of our pandemic recovery. And so you'll see that our occupancy rate. This is compared to the previous year was, is continually has been getting better. It was a minus 4% from the previous year in quarter four. This, this last quarter, quarter one, it actually went down a little bit, but notice our total revenues. Because if you track that over time, this is the first time we were positive year over year in over a year and we were 13% 13% up on revenues this quarter. Now, one thing that we'll be looking out for is, of course, there's a lot of coronavirus concerns right now. We, I get tourist sentiment data. There's a company that surveys folks. And we've been seeing people's interest and excitement about taking a trip, getting continually, continually better. We're seeing that drop somewhat because a lot of people are concerned in the state of Texas. There's, I believe, there's a lot of people who probably don't share quite the same level of concern as some others. People are definitely traveling. But we might see a softening in, in our increases in the short term. Hopefully that won't last very long, but I would expect to see that. Could I get the next slide? I'm speaking to you today so that we'd have a chance to get some information for you about the recent Viva Big Bend, which was their 10th event. They were very, very happy with the turnout. They estimated 2000 to 3000 people per day participated in the events at Viva. There were 32 shows in Alpine this year and in nine different venues in Alpine. That was the Visitor Center, the Railroad Blues, Old Gringo, Spice Wood, Plain, the Holland Hotel, Trans Pecos Banks, the Murphy Street and Out West Feed and Supply. One thing, they're always looking for ways to tie into to visitors. So they offered lodging and ticket packages for the first time. That was something that they wanted me to let you know that they were trying out at a couple of different hotels and those went pretty well. And they, we saw visitors from all over Texas as well as interstate visitors from Arizona, New Mexico, Colorado, California, Oklahoma, Arkansas, Missouri, Illinois, New York and Minnesota. So they were very happy with how the event went. Next slide. Right now, we're, we're accepting entries in our annual photo contest. Contest is our 11th annual photo contest. And this is a way that we, we get to collect a lot of great photos of the area. The contest rules allow the city to use the photos to promote visitation to Alpine. So we have pretty generous cash prizes, but for the value we get from photos to share, I can share a different photo every day of the year on our social media. So it's a, it's a great program for us and we're collecting entries now and our deadline is September 30th, if anyone's interested. Next slide, please. One thing that is news since our, my last quarterly report is we started a podcast that we are partnering with KBLF. And so we get a broadcast every other Friday on the radio as part of the program. But the core of it is a podcast that goes out to potential visitors. And so I gave you a list of our first seven episodes, the subjects. We did a welcome episode, covered day trips from Alpine, went on murals in downtown. We did an interview with the director of the Museum of the Big Bend, leading up to Viva Big Bend, we did an episode. Heather at the Visitor Center and I talked about family activities that you could have in the area. And then Big Bend Ranch State Park. And then most recently, we interviewed Chachi with the Big Bend Ranch Rodeo and CJ Aragon with the Soul Ross Rodeo and did a rodeo in Alpine episode. So that's going very well. We're getting a lot of good feedback. That's something we're, we're doing that's pretty new. Next slide. And then I wanted to let you all know about something we've been doing for quite a while, which is a co-op ad. It's a cost effective way to keep a presence in Texas highways, which the statewide magazines are quite expensive for print. And so we partner with five other communities, Marfa, Fort Davis, Fort Stockton, Midland and Odessa every other month. So each, each partner gets the highlight spot at the top of the page. So you'll see that Alpine had, had the top of the page for the next issue, which is October. And is there anything else? That may be my last slide. I believe it is. So those are just a few highlights I wanted to share with you. If, does anyone have any questions about what we're doing, what's going on with tourism at the moment?
Yep, we, we had a great turnout at the Viva Big Bend. I happened to drive around to check on, on, on the folks over here and it was great. Good venues, music was playing.
Lot of good music.
Yeah, and a lot of people had a lot of fun. I had some concerns about the COVID, but it really didn't occur.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, that, if only it had happened a week or two earlier, we could have all breathed a lot easier, but yeah.
Absolutely.
All right, well, thank you all very much.
Thank you very much, Chris.
And I could say, I don't know whether, how much we may, your group may have had, but little flyer down at the information center that lists all the murals on the front and where they are on the back is fantastic.
That, I want to give credit to Nancy Whitlock. She had a, we, she based it on the historic walking tour that we have a brochure for and she redrew that map and placed. Now we have so many more new murals since she did it that our challenge is to update it. And so those, and they're, they keep on coming, so.
At one time, one time, Chris, they were supposed to, Tim was trying to get where you could add them to your phone. So whenever you're walking down the sidewalk.
Yes.
It notify you, let you know, hey, you got.
And yeah, well, I can tell you a little about that. There is, we do have a mobile app that's Visit Alpine, Texas, and it, it does have a map built in. And so you can, no, I don't have the, I don't have the murals on that app. I've got the historic walking tour. Working on getting the murals, but at the same time, we're working with the Alpine Historical Association and with Soul Ross on doing a separate mobile app that would be GPS based, that would tell you when you're near a location. And it can have up to five tours. So we're looking at the general historic buildings, which the Historic Association has done so much research. We might have a couple of different tours of different kinds of sites and the murals. We might also include the Ghost Tour information Alpine Historic Association has been working on as well as Hispanic Heritage Tour. That would have the new mural at Soul Ross is kind of one of the flagship locations. So that's in the works. It's budgeted for this fiscal year. So we're hoping to open that account before the year closes out and then work with those partners to start getting the information in there.
Yeah, that would be fantastic for tourists because they can forecast ahead of time when they come to visit us, what to look for and whatnot.
Absolutely.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, thank you all.
Okay, Visitor Center, Heather Gaden.
Hi, I hope y'all can hear me. The Visitor Center has a metal roof and it's pouring down rain. So excuse the noise in the background. This is just a quick look at the numbers. As most of you know, the Visitor Center has one full-time employee right now, myself. When I'm not here, we do put information out on the porch. The downside of that is that when we're not here, we don't get account for the visitors who are here because we don't have them signed into our guestbook. But we also have no numbers to compare to at this point because of COVID last year in 2020. But I will tell you, looking at your back to 2019, April was similar. We were down just a little bit to 2019. May was actually more than 2019. June and July were both down, but we used to go set up onsite for Viva Big Bend at the box office and have every single Viva person who was picking up a ticket sign in. And we don't do that anymore. We decided it was a better use, more help to the visitors for us to stay open here at the Visitor Center with our bathroom facilities and with the information that we have here. So I, I was not at the Viva box office as they have been in the past, but we still were able to provide a lot of information to people and I'll talk more about Viva later. We also have information requests that come in from different, very, a couple of different avenues that we get leads from. And from that, we send a postcard that directs people to our website. And they also then can request information packets from me. So I sent out in the last quarter 537 postcards. Then the website packets that were requested was 31. And then just direct mail, people send letters or some people email or call me and ask for packets. I sent out 12 of those. Something that just came up in the last quarter that I hadn't had to do in a long time is the Texas Information Centers, the Texas Travel Centers. They are back to pretty much normal operations and they have started requesting a lot of information about Alpine. And that is, so these are bulk information requests that go out like 200 to 500 of our pamphlets at a time to stock the Texas Information Center. So that's stuff that's going to people who are looking across the state of Texas to make travel plans here. We've sent stuff to the Anthony Travel Center, Orange Langtree and Amarillo. Langtree is actually probably the one that sees the most people that are headed here. That's there at Del Rio as you had this way. So we're sending out a lot of information to them, which is good because it means that people are making plans to come here and see us. Next slide. We talked a little bit, Chris talked about the, the Visitor Center being a location for Viva Big Bend. That was tied into our midweek music, Merkentown Music Event that we've been hosting now since last year. We had some great events. In the spring, we were doing it weekly. One of the big events we had for that was Earth Day. We partnered with Keep Alpine Beautiful and Adalina had, she had a booth out here and then the Soul Ross had, was out here selling plants. And we also did events for kids that were hugely popular. They made pine cones. And then I think if you can go to the next slide, there's some other stuff of the kids events. We did a mural. We actually took the cowboy mural that's here all the time. I covered it in paper and kids put their handprints on it. So if you go to the next one, you can see their finished work. It was pretty cute for Earth Day. Unfortunately, we had terrible winds and it didn't last very long, but all the kids painted it and we had a really good turnout for that one. So that was a great kind of special event for April. Next slide. And May, we had several different music guests. We had Cinco de Sase. We were a day late on Cinco de Mayo, but we had the mariachi band from Prestadio come. And then we had Doug Moreland, wonderful fiddle player from over in Fort Davis. We had Debo and Roland and local musicians do an open mic that is popular because we get to hear a little bit from all of our local musicians for that one. Next slide. Oh, also in May, we did do free snow cones. I forgot that part. We did free snow cones. But anyway, moving on to June, our June event, we went to monthly for the summer when it was really hot and we were also competing with a lot of other things going on. So we went to monthly and in June, we had an amazing event with the Alpine 06 Cowboys. They came out and did a meet and greet and they could not have been better with all of the fans that were out here and kids, the kids played, we did a giant tic-tac-toe on the lawn. They posed for pictures. Next slide. They talked to our vendors. Some of our, some of our vendors bought them all dinner. They were so appreciative. It was great. And then they, they did painting. We also did sugar cookie decorating. Kids could decorate sugar cookies like baseballs. Next slide. And they had all of the, we had that inside the Visitor Center and kids were decorating cookies and all the players took cookies. So it was a great event for June with the Cowboys and we appreciate them giving us their time because they actually had a game that night. So they came and did a quick meet and greet before they went off to their game. Next, in July, next slide, we were of course hosted part of Viva Big Bend. This was a big deal for us. We were there, one of their free shows. We actually had more vendors than ever show up on the street. And then we had a massive wind event that blew everything away within the first 15 minutes. So a lot of our vendors packed up. But then after a little bit of rain, the doodle and hogwops were able to continue. Next slide. And they had a full band. They had a lot of their people that don't play with them all the time, come back and join them just for Viva weekend. So that was great because a lot of people don't make it to their Sunday very late night show that closes Viva at Railroad Blues. So this was more of their family friendly version and their kids were there and lots of kids were there enjoying. Next slide. So again, Viva Big Bend was a, was a big success here at the Visitor Center for the midweek Merkentown Music. It was great to have them out here and have live music here on the lawn for that. Next slide. Right before Viva weekend, we helped with the downtown sweep. We partnered again with Keep Alpine Beautiful to clean up some of downtown before Viva weekend. Adalina was very happy with the volunteer turnout compared to other cleanup she's held. The total trash and weeds collected was approximately 450 pounds. So we went through downtown and cleaned up a bunch of trash and weeds and worked on some of the areas that are high traffic and really clearing up stuff in front of the murals and down the alley art. So that was a great event that we partnered with them for. Next slide. We have taken our show on the road a little bit lately, the Alpine, Visit Alpine Info Tent. I set up on the street, like I said, to do free snow cones in May for midweek Merkentown. I set up on the street, like I said, to do free snow cones in May for midweek Merkentown. Usually I distribute the information from the visitor center, but snow cones, I didn't want in the visitor center. So I took them out on the street and passed out my information from there. Thank you to Bob Ward. He donated the snow cone machine for that from Morrison. So that was great. And then also in June, we gave out a ton of koozies at the Art Walk mural fundraiser that they had. When they had live music and pizza. So we gave out our koozies and passed out the mural tours that you guys just talked about. As part of that fundraiser. And then 4th of July, we were out at the park. Again, it was very wet. We had rain. But it dried up and it was really great. We we did a tent with the Historic Association and they actually sold the snow cones at that one. And I passed out the info. I highlighted some of the most popular things that we have here at the visitor center. And it's not only for visitors, but for locals. Some of them don't realize all the things that we resources that we have for them as well. Next slide. So as events have started to come back strong here in Alpine, I'm attending as much as possible and sharing them live on our Visit Alpine Facebook page. I've been at Cowboys Baseball Games Live, the Art Walk mural fundraiser, Fiesta de Soul, 4th of July mural dedication. I work the door at Viva Big Ben Friday and Saturday nights, so I was able to go live from the locations that I was at for that and highlight those vans. And also the kid show that was right over here at Plain. So this really helps show people that are considering a trip here that there's lots to do and it definitely makes people want to return. The comments that we get on social media are often about they wish people wishing they were here. They can't wait to come back or. It's great to see us live music again. And occasionally they comment on my videotaking abilities in the wind, which I have to say that's West Texas wind. Sorry. But it's really, we get a lot of good feedback from the lives that show that there's a lot happening here in Alpine. So next slide. One of the things that Chris talked about in his full packet was that we worked with CGI the week of Viva Big Ben to get a new. Some new video shot to update the promos that are on the city website. One will be a completely new video about families, things that families can do here. So I actually did the coordinating with three families so that we had kiddos to go with us to Waterman's Ranch, the Museum of the Big Ben and Hancock Hill. So we have a big thank you to the Stanfords, the Schneers and the Sledge families. They've all participated and let their kids be in the video. And we got great videos. So we'll have an updated promo video to be on the city website very shortly with that. And on that same note, next slide, we have a new addition at the visitor center. We have a kids area. We put in a kids area outside about a year ago. One of the reasons why we keep talking so much about kids stuff is that we know that our largest group of visitors is families looking for experiences for their children. So we have a great little kids area now here at the visitor center. We have a table and we also partnered with the library to offer activity kits for the kids. So they're making up the activity kits and I just have to have the crayons or glue or whatever supplies wise. And kids can kind of hang out in this little corner of the visitor center while they're waiting on their parents. So I think that's the end of my slides. The only other stuff I have to talk about is big projects coming up. We are working, obviously. Anticipating the the start of the construction, which I've been talking with you, construction. And we've got great plans for the remodel here with the new bathrooms and patio and storage going in. And then we have some work that needs to be done with that to move the monument that's in the back. It needs moved. And then we also have to do some repairs on the cowboy cutouts that you saw in some of the pictures. Those are a hugely popular place for tourists to take pictures. And it actually has some damage. The wood and pipe have rotted. That's a, those sculptures were done by Bob Heck. So we want to make sure that we get those repaired so that we have that because that's kind of our iconic thing here at the visitor center, those cowboys that are right out front on the fence. So we'll get those fixed and make sure that we take care of that because it is something that is definitely noticeable and that visitors like here. So that's all I have. If anyone has any questions for me.
Questions.
You're doing an awesome job. Thank you, Heather.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, next we have Jennifer Stewart.
She'll be attending.
Okay.
I am here. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, so this is going to be our quarterly, our second quarterly report for April, May and June. This first slide is our stray intakes for those three months. 94 animals were picked up as stray. 44 cats, not including our feral cats, 49 dogs and one duck. Only one of those animals was a repeat offender. Ward two had the most cats that we intaked and the dogs were pretty much evenly matched around around town here. So we had, I think, we had three that had 10 pickups and the other had seven and eight, I believe. Next slide. Feral cat intakes. We only had 12 cats come in, feral cats. These are unadoptable cats. They're the wild cats. But 12 is actually a really low number for us. So it was, we were happy to see that. Once again, we only, our main area was in Ward two that we were picking these cats up from. So it looks like our trapping was mainly being done in in our Ward two this, those three months. Next slide. Return to owner. This is a comparison over the last three years during this time of year. The stray intake, well, the last three years comparing the stray intake and the return to owner. As you can see, our intakes have decreased significantly, especially compared to the 2019. And we've actually increased our return to owner stats. So 52 returned owners, which is over half of what our intake was, which is good. We like to see people reclaiming their pets. More cats are being reclaimed as well, which we like to see. Typically, it's it's mainly just the dogs are getting reclaimed. Next slide. Surrenders. We had five cat surrenders and 30 dog surrenders. The 30 dog surrenders, that is a significant increase compared to this time last year. We where we only had two surrenders total. It was one cat and one dog. So. It was unfortunate to see that many all at once and was a heavy hit for our shelter. Next slide. Other intakes, we do from time to time assist with the animals that belong to somebody who has been arrested. Either the animals are in their possession or the animals are still at home and need need some assistance. Because maybe the the owner might be in jail for a little bit longer than they thought. And we also assist people with if they had a medical emergency or our death. So these are just our numbers for intakes in that regard. Most always these animals are either returned to owner or turn to family member or returned to a friend. Next slide. Adoption. So this, this chart kind of shows our adoptions over the last three years in this, in this second quarter. 26 were adopted this year, 16 cats and 10 dogs. We do see a decrease in adoptions overall. Not sure why that is. We did have about a pretty decent increase in our dogs last year. Cats were about the same, but this year everything seems a little bit slower. Next slide. Transport. We, I actually had a typo there. We actually transported 21 animals, which is still a good, good amount. But 21 animals got out of the shelter by transport, which means that they went to other rescues to be adopted out. Six of them are cats and 15 were dogs. Next slide, animal bites. So we did have a significant increase in our animal bites. That we normally don't see. As you can see, over the last three, I have the graph for the last three years, we had a spike for some reason. In June of this year with animal bites. About half of the incidents were provoked incidences, which means that they were, they could have been prevented if maybe a different. Different handling was used with the animal or, you know, they didn't, somebody didn't go under the property of the animal or or whatever. So we'd rather see that number down in the ones or zeros. So I don't know why there was such an increase in that. Hopefully this next quarter that I I report, there won't be as many. So we're going to just keep an eye on that. We do try and keep, keep our streets as safe as possible. We do ask people to be careful when they're handling animals as well to decrease on the bites there. Next slide. Micro tripping. We place 14 chips for the public, six cats and eight dogs. We can always do micro tripping up here at the shelter for $15. Just if you'd like to call ahead and let us know you're coming, we are happy to put a chip in any animal. It helps us get your animals back home quicker. Citations issued. We did issue 30 citations that quarter. 14 running at large, seven no license, no seven, no microchip, two for no vaccine. This is a typical, typically what we see is half, half of our citations are usually running at large. So that's what the graph shows. Monthly PSAs. I am trying to do a monthly PSA this year, every month. April was emergency pet plans. So that that's actually just helping people kind of get a plan together. If, you know, if the natural disaster happens, just to what you need to do in case of emergency type of thing. Kitten season information on what you, what you should do if you find a kitten or if you're having issues with. You know, cats breeding in your area and things like that. June was information on rehoming a pet. That was actually a push because of all the surrenders that we did end up with. So we we thought maybe putting some information on how to rehome your pet on your own would be, would be helpful for the public. All of these PSAs that that I do are on the city website under animal, the animal control section. So I strongly suggest going and taking a look. There's lots of helpful information there. And like I said, I try and do that once a month. And that's all I really got. I, any questions? I do want to ask if there's anything that the council would like me to include in my slides for the next go around. Any new information that you you'd like to see if you're, you don't, you don't need to see something or if you want to see more of something or if you need more information. Would like to know.
Mayor Castle, I want to let you all know that Ms. Stewart has gone above and beyond the call of duty. She's done an excellent job in this last month. We had a very difficult case involving a couple of young kids that had. Over 10 animals that had to be seized by by Ms. Stewart and her staff. The, we had two court hearings on them. They ended up violating the court order. We ended up having another court hearing on them. Judge Cole was very patient with them, but Ms. Stewart ended up having to go to Fort Stockton and deal with animal control people there to resolve this case. But she handled it very professionally and I'm very proud of her. She represented Alpine very well.
And she's always done a fantastic job. Or since she took over. The animal control shelter out there. She's done terrific. Her staff the same way. So she needs to be applauded for the, for that and for staff again for the great job they do. And it's a tough one, too.
It is.
Thank you all so much. It really does mean a lot to hear. Sometimes we don't hear it enough. So it's really, it's really nice to hear.
They'll do a great job on that case, June.
Thank you, Rod.
Jennifer, you're very thorough. I appreciate the time you take to provide all this information to us and great job.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Jennifer.
Thank you.
May I add something real quick?
Yes.
She also went way above, beyond her duties as a, we had a case with a mental health subject. And we ended up, yeah, got to go to hospital and she went way above to find somebody to take care of those animals. She found some family, I believe, in some other state and she held those pets until, until some people and take custody of them. Great job.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Darryl.
Welcome.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, let's move on to public hearings. Public hearings obtained citizen views and comments on the second and final reading of the ordinance 2021 dash 08 dash 01. And honestly, sending a portion of ordinance 2018 dash 06 dash 01 regarding water utility reserve funds. Anybody? Let's go on to public hearings obtained citizen views and comments on short term rentals specials, special use permits and applications. Okay, public hearings obtained citizen views and comments on 2021 dash 2022 proposed budget.
I think Dr. Oppenheimer wanted to make another comment if that's allowed.
Yeah, this, yes.
I think we started when I got up from there or when I start talking?
Starting now.
Right now?
Yes.
Give me a couple of seconds. I'll start this time. Anybody who likes numbers. Reading budgets is very interesting. It's like once you read. Especially before you go to bed, you'll never go to sleep. It's amusing, really. And I'm going to talk some numbers. Again. On the summary that was submitted. To the council on Friday. Today is Tuesday. I don't know how many of you have had the time to read the budget, much less the public. And I'll suggest that. It be postponed, the frustrating be postponed. Public hearing should be held like workshop and more input should be taken. And I'll give you some examples. Okay, I'm looking at this number again. The summary revenues. Proposed 20. 21. 1.9 million dollars. Proposed. It doesn't say what the actual revenues were. On page 14 of your budget, if you look at that, and I hope that time is not taken out of mind. Actual city sales tax. Was 937. 937,000. Out of 1.9 million. So we knock off $1 million. I don't think we can make $1 million in one month. So that means. That this again, 13.63 million dollars that you're talking about in this summary. You are now talking about 12.68 million. If I compare that with the proposed 2122 budget, 15 million, that is 25% increase. 25% increase. Okay, move on. The next item I have is the streets. It says street revenue is $98,000. When I serve on the council and as a mayor also, we never made that much money. And here. On the same page, 14, street department. It realized only $2,121.74. And you're not going to make any more money. And then it says, proposed, you were expecting $90,000 a road repair. Are we repairing roads somewhere else where they're making money? We can't make money by repairing our own roads. Those expenses.
Time.
Oh, yes, you're right. Okay, anyway, that's what I want to point out. So I suggest that let's not talk about frustrating this at this meeting. Have some workshops. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Anybody else?
Okay, let's move on to public hearings obtained citizen's views and comments on 2021 dash 2026 capital improvement plan. Yes, sir.
Rick Stevens, Ward five on the capital improvement plan, item 6.4 in public hearings. Four comments. The capital approval plan for five years shows a 14.9 million dollars. But many of the pages and the actual allocations of numbers are blank. So the capital improvement plan is being proposed as significantly larger and is yet undefined. So you can find many blank pages in the capital improvement plan. Second, the airport funding fails to support investments by hangar owners by not funding common taxi areas that are clearly city responsibility. The city has no strategy for addressing the issue. The city has no strategy for addressing the issue. And the capital improvement plan of only ten thousand dollars per year is not sufficient to do common taxi areas. Third, the capital approval plan has two pages titled incubator space for economic development, which I think economic development is a great idea. Which shows spending forty thousand dollars from American Rescue Plan, but there's no plan. All it is is forty thousand dollars set aside. And as a result, in my view, it's a meaningless expenditure of money. Second page of the same title is funding for the outdoor lighting to comply with the dark skies ordinance. What does that have to do with incubator space? Fourth comment I would make is smart water meters. There's a one point four million dollars that's listed in the capital plan. And even if you double the number of people to read meters, it's far less than spending one point four million dollars. We've seen that number come down about four hundred percent. I would contend continue to wait before you spend any money. I would not spend any money on smart meters because it's a huge waste of money, particularly when you look at all the overhead associated with that. Those are my comments.
Thanks, sir. Anybody else? Okay, let's move on to the consent agenda minutes, financial reports, written reports, board appointments. Notice to the public, the following items are of a routine administrative nature. The council has been furnished with background and support material on each item. Or in, it has been discussed at a previous meeting. All items will be acted upon by one vote without being discussed separately unless requested by a council member. In which event the item or items will immediately be withdrawn for individual consideration in its normal sequence. After the items not requiring separate discussion have been acted upon, the remaining items will be adopted by one vote. Interim city manager.
Approval of August third, twenty twenty one regular meeting minutes. Approval of administrative receptionist job description and approval of records for job description.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion. Counsel.
I'll make a motion to approve the August third regular meeting minutes. The administrative receptionist job description and the records.
Okay, is there a second? Okay, any discussion? See none? All's in favor, raise your right hand. Oppose, white sign motion carries unanimously. Okay, let's go to the information or discussion items. Discussion ramifications of illegal dumping and possible solutions. Councilman, councilperson.
Yes, that had been discussed on the previous meeting and I think Megan was coming back and as their city employee to give us an update on some of the answers or solutions they had for this issue.
Yes. I actually have Adalina Deal here with us today. And we have a game plan, we like to call it. Do you have a presentation? Adalina, you want to do all of it? And so just the basis of it, we have had a lot of complaints and so we had to get back with TDS and look at cost and look at where some of the funding can come from, look at our internal procedures, how we could address it. There was a lot of back and forth between departments with TDS. What options do we have? The biggest thing that we, we are focusing on, of course, is the education. The city can go and clean up all the legal dumping and the very next day, it's all going to be right back. So without the education and understanding that there are so many more options and just getting all that information out there, we try our best. You know, we have our website, we have Facebook, we have multiple Facebook pages we utilize. It's on the radio. We send out all this information and it's just going to have to do a little bit harder. And one of the things we also took into consideration is our internal procedures. So one thing we wanted to focus on was just how do we handle it within our own departments? Illegal dumping is a code compliance issue, but it's also keep Alpine beautiful. You, this is our community. And we're the ones making our community dirty. We're the ones who make it unwelcoming when we do this. We, we throw our mattress beside the dumpster, we drive it across town and dump it somewhere else. And so we're looking at how do we address it internally? Adalina and I have been working on some thought processes and putting some procedures in place. Code compliance does have a complaint form that people can go in and they can fill out their complaint. Provide as much information, love pictures. If you get a picture of a truck with a license plate and you see them dumping it and you know you don't want to tattle on your neighbor, but take the picture. That way we can backtrack and address it. There are fines that are associated with illegal dumping only if we can follow up with the people who are doing it. And so we're working on kind of those as well as building up a database of where are these hotspots? A lot of people say it's on the south side. And that's not true. We, we have illegal dumping on the north side of town. We have it on the south side, east, the west. It is literally all over the city. So we put in some extra work here and we thought, okay, let's track the complaints, let's track the feedback, let's track the pickups and actually kind of build a database where we can look at a map and we can see these are the areas either we're constantly having to clean up. Maybe it's one specific street, maybe it's multiple specific streets. But then it also goes back to our, our team building side with, okay, this is a hotspot. TDS has moved the dumpster. Now we're putting up cameras. We do have the ability to put up cameras. Code enforcement has several of them and start recording the areas to ensure that people don't continue to dump in the same spot. Of course, put up a little sign, hey, you're on camera. We really want to discourage it. And in order to discourage that, we have all these additional services. And I'm actually going to let Adalina pick up from here because this is, this is really her, her project and baby with the bulky pickups and the recycling. And so I will let her step up to podium here.
Go to the next slide. This is our current bulky quarterly pickup schedule. We're going to continue as it's specified in the ordinance. People have to call the week before, schedule a pickup and then they may set their items in front of their home. We are stressing to the public only scheduled pickups are going to be picked up. Everything else is going to consider it illegal dumping. This gives us our opportunity, our coast department can come and reach out to those people and let them know how this procedure should be. And then maybe give them an opportunity to take it to us, to the recycling center or wait till next quarter. Next slide, please. Additional services, we, we spoke with TDS and we're, we're adding additional bulky roll off containers at the center. That way people can bring us their items in between quarters. And it won't, it, it won't be a limit. We'll be, we'll be taking items through working hours and we'll have enough space that if we're full, we won't stop taking residents. Also, we are extending our hours at the recycling center. Instead of thirty two, thirty one hours, we're going to forty hours. We're going to be open Tuesday to Saturday, nine to five P M. Through lunch and close Sunday and Monday. Next slide, please. This is the trifle we give out at the center and it's the materials we take at this time. And then next slide, please. We do take tires for a fee at the recycling center and there's the prices per tire and if it has a rim. Next slide, please. And for more information, like Megan said, we had all the information on our city website under environmental services department tab. And on the city Facebook pages, the Health Landers Recycling Center and Keep Up By Beautiful. On the Facebook pages is where we have our most current information and any information on our waste streams if we, if we stop taking anything. Or we start taking an item.
So this goes into our basements. Like I said, we worked with TDS, so we did get some prices. We are going to have them do kind of a work order. A city employee, Adalina, will be the one to call in and request a certain area be cleaned up. This isn't they go and pick up all the illegal dumping. They pick up the areas that are the most unsafe and most unhealthy. And we start with our code compliance and investigate. We follow up with the complaints that are being initiated. And then, of course, our repeat locations where we collect the data to have the understanding is, is a trouble spot. Do we put up a camera? Do we ask PD to do a couple of extra patrols at night, just, just trying to get the public to be aware that we're, we're very much out there. We're trying our best. And we extend, extended our hours at the recycling center so that they have more availability. If they've got the couch in the back of the truck, just drive it on over to the recycling center. We're staying open later on Saturday for everyone who does their spring cleanings on Saturday so that they can, can dump all this extra material. The only thing we ask is we don't take the construction. So if you're turning down your house or trailer, you have to take it to the landfill on that one. And I guess at the extra hours, we're trying to get it out to the public as much as possible, as much information. And so you're going to start seeing the town change. We're hoping that by encouraging the public to not continue to dispose of things. We all want people to buy new mattresses and couches, you know, update their homes. But to dispose of it correctly. We have the availability at the recycling center now. We're going to work with TDS to, to address the current issues. And then like I said, we have the additional hours. If you see someone illegal dump, please don't hesitate to call. Go online. We do have the compliance complaint form. We also have a feedback form on, on how do I provide feedback? We really want to encourage the, the citizens to interact, but at the same time, we're all residents, we're all part of this community. So we need to do our job not to illegal dump and continue to make our, our city look the way it does. So lots of changes coming up the next two months. One of the things that I got feedback on was the change in the pickup. It actually wasn't a change. It is in our city ordinances that you do have to call in beforehand to schedule a pickup. So it's just resorting back to what's already been established by council. And you give them a call. We, we keep a database of everyone who's, you know, hey, I need some bulky pickup. This is my address. We're working with TDS to make sure that that's clean lined. There was some initial issues when that did go back to the organ side of it. So we're trying our best. I give props to Adalina and Code Compliance. They're, they're both on, on board, trying to clean up the community as well. So hopefully we can get as much information out there. And if you see your neighbor with a mattress, just remind them that there's plenty of places besides thanks to a dumpster to dump it.
Yep.
Yes, so are citizens able to, are citizens able to call on a problem spot?
So they, yes, they can call. We're directing them to put it in writing so that we can ensure that we get all the information correct. I pay for like our, our new receptionist to, to write down the wrong information, the wrong address. That way if it's online, it's documented and we can start doing our damage. Yes. And I know that Code Compliance has received several complaints on illegal dumping. We've had a couple of citizens even follow up with, with administration on some of the trouble spots. So we already have a, an initial list created so that we can address the ones that we know are, are very much out of hand.
Would that include the one that we talked about on Saul Ross and Brian?
Yes.
Yeah, that's, someone's been dumping there and there's a pile of about ten foot high of mattresses, furniture's been going on for quite a while. And this gentleman emailed me the other day with a picture of it. I couldn't believe how, how high that thing was.
And I know I've tried to follow up with a couple of residents. We just had to get some process in place and give it a call. And it will be a cost to the city to, to clean up some of these trouble areas.
Anything else? Chris? Okay, let's go on to the action items to be accompanied by a brief statement of facts. Include where funds are coming from, if applicable. Action items limited up to ten per meeting after being called upon the mayor, mayor pro temp citizens are required to state their name and the ward with they reside. Power will be given to citizens of Alpine and those who own business or property in the city. Individuals who do not live in or own business property in the city of Alpine will be allowed to speak if there's time available. And the first one, interim city manager.
Discuss, consider and approve the second and final reading of ordinance twenty twenty one dash oh eight dash oh one. An ordinance rescinding a portion of ordinance twenty eighteen oh six oh one regarding water utility reserve funds.
Okay, entertain a motion.
A move that we discussed, consider and approve the second and final reading of ordinance twenty twenty one dash zero eight dash zero one. An ordinance rescinding a portion of ordinance twenty eighteen dash zero six zero one regarding water utility reserve.
Okay, is there a second? Okay, motion's made in second discussion. Need discussion. Okay, all those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Oppose, white sign unanimous. Megan.
Discuss, consider and approve the first reading of twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two proposed budget.
Entertain a motion for that.
I mean, that we discussed, consider and approve the first reading of the twenty twenty one to twenty twenty two proposed budget.
Is there a second? Okay, discussion. I know we had some citizens' views on the, on their own some items.
I know that you guys have already made the, the motion. Actually, this was kind of a catchall agenda item. We had put it on the agenda in hopes to have things done. It will actually be another first reading. And we didn't want to take it off and set ourselves up not to have the availability to get it passed and proposed by the end of September. Since we're trying to get all of our budget and taxes within our regular scheduled meetings, we left it on there. The hopes had been that we would get the proposed budget out much sooner. And there was a few delays. So it was kind of a, we're going to leave it there and pray that we actually could have had everything done in, in a faster, more timely manner. And so if council would like to, to table the item or open it up for discussion over some of the comments. I, I would like there to be another first reading. And then the final and second reading would be at the last meeting in September.
Okay, yeah.
Prior to the tax rate.
I'd like to table it because there's a lot of, that we need to look at. And there's some eyes that were, you know, I think that need to be filled in some, some blocks that need to be filled in or whatnot. Okay. So.
I, I think we do need to before I make a comment, I will let y'all know that I have been unable to make the budget workshops. I have started working full time, so I have it. So in a way, I feel like I might not have much of a say, but I do feel that the citizens have brought up a lot of, a lot of good things that we need to look into. I think more time needs to be spent on it. We need to be a little bit more transparent. And look into some of the issues that have been brought up.
So would you like to table the motion?
Are we just approving a proposed budget? This is not the.
It's not the first, well, it's just the first reading of it, but we're going to have another first reading later on.
So I think we could approve Chris's motion. We're not approving an actual budget. We're just.
No, it's not an actual budget, just a first reading. But I guess what Megan was saying, we're going to have another first reading.
Right.
We can have another first reading.
We don't have to table this.
If we don't have a table, you can discuss it and prove it with changes.
Right.
And then there'd be another first reading.
That's what I would do.
But if we do that, then does that not cut us off to the first reading has already be done, been done? So basically we're on the second.
No, because it'll be the first reading of actual adoption rather than the first reading of the proposed, right?
Okay.
Is that right, Megan?
Yeah, because we definitely need to study this budget a little bit more thorough.
I think we should go with Chris's motion.
Okay.
My opinion, of course.
Any other discussion then? All those in favor of the motion as it stands, raise your right hand. Okay, motion carries unanimously. Let's go to item number three.
Discuss, consider and approve resolution twenty twenty one dash oh eight dash eighteen. A resolution approving the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty six capital improvement.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion for that.
A move that we discussed, consider and approve resolution twenty twenty one dash zero eight dash eighteen. A resolution approving the twenty twenty one to twenty twenty six capital improvement.
Okay, second.
Second.
Okay, discussion.
I think this one also needs to be tabled, given some of the information that has been presented tonight. As opposed to, and this is not a first reading, Megan, this is.
No, this is just the resolution following what we're required.
Yeah, because it all kind of ties in together with, with the budget and whatnot. So.
No.
It doesn't separately totally. Okay. Yeah.
Entabling these, will there be more, will there be workshops? Will there be more information put out? Will we, will there actually be something done other than just moving it from one meeting to the next?
Depends on what you want to change. It would be your guidance on, on what you want to update, remove, change.
If that could be done. That could be done in a workshop.
Yeah. And I think, you know, and this is still part of the discussion. I think the workshops should change the time so that you can attend and have an input on.
Well, not just me, but I feel that we we need a little bit more input.
Yeah.
Uh, this has been through through quite a bit of work with council and we're still missing quite a few very important issues. So I'm not sure what the answer is, but they have brought up quite a bit and.
Now we need more study on.
Yes, something other than just keep moving it.
Any other? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. All those against it, raise your hand. Okay, the motion fails. Thank you very much.
Then I would make the motion.
Okay. Is there a second? Okay, any discussion on? See, now all the same table table it. Raise your right hands. Motion carries. Thank you. So we'll table it. Okay, let's move on to item number four.
Discuss, consider and approve the assignment, bill of sale and conveyance between the city of Alpine and West Texas Gas for the relocation of city gap. City gates. So council had approved the relocation of the city gates with the original contract. This is the legal side of it, the actual sale and and conveyance, giving us all of that extra lineage with the gap.
Okay, so entertain a motion for this.
I move that we discuss, consider and approve the assignment, bill of sale and conveyance between the city and West Texas Gas, the relocation of city gates.
Is there a second? Okay, most have been made in second. Any discussion? Then we had discussed, like Megan said, so. Okay, all those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Both. Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Let's go to item number five.
Discuss, consider and approve the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two Alpine library contract. This contract is brought up every year. Um, it's been renewed for the past several years. An updated version is provided in the.
I need a motion, please.
I mean, that we discuss, consider and approve the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two Alpine library contract.
Okay, is there a second? Okay, most have been made in second discussion.
Megan, you said there that there have been some some changes to it?
The dates.
Just the dates, so everything else.
Yeah, last year's expired at the end of September, so we renew it moving forward if the council.
Anyone? All those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Pose. Okay, unanimous motion carries. And uh, this next one's uh, is Stokes.
I know y'all have been missing my mouth, so here, you'll be blessed with hearing me. Uh, discuss, consider and approve the appointment of Rod Ponton to full-time city attorney.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion. Oh, you made the motion, I'm sorry.
I'll I'll make the motion.
Okay, I need a second.
To appoint Rod Ponton, full-time city attorney.
Okay, and I need a second. Okay, motion's made in second. Any discussion?
I'd like to see, before we appoint him, do we have a contract? Do we have what we went with when he was interim attorney or? What is, what have you looked at in that regard?
So the interim contract is just uh, literally a change of the original attorney contract prior. Um, and added interim in the front of it. So it would be the same contract without interim.
So it'll be on an hourly basis as opposed to an annual, so.
Yes.
Okay, any more discussion?
Yes. I have quite a bit.
Okay.
I'm not in favor of this for multiple reasons that I will go into in detail. Number one, being the the one that I feel that we should have have uh, put out and ask people to put in applications for this. The numerous reasons which I, for which I don't believe that Mr. Ponton is who we need to have for the city. We've had numerous issues. He was fired by last, by the last council in December. A lot of these issues are still happening. He has had issues with overbilling the city, which is at this time is still happening. Uh, that has not been brought up as I have not placed it on the agenda. I have been waiting to get information from my my co-counselors as to whether they had requested some of the work that he is billing for and as of this date, Megan tells me that they have not responded, so I will be placing it on the next agenda to try to get answers as to what some of the billing is for. He has released information to the public that was not releasable under state law before. He's, he has had ethics charges filed against him by the city of Pecos and is in the process of filing further ethics charges against him. Instead of working with the city, he has put us in a position of possible liability last year when he was working through the issues with the city of Alpine Police Department. He is currently handling quite a bit of business with the city courts, which he himself had made a comment at one of our previous meetings, was a conflict of interest. He also led the city into litigation with Union Pacific. That was not in twen- in two thousand and five, the laws had changed. He should have known that 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 we had no right to file a lawsuit against Union Pacific. That and various reasons, I don't believe that Rod is the person we need to be having. I feel that we need to advertise the position and let other people put in for it. I for one will not, will not be voting to to have Mr. Ponton as the city attorney.
I don't know if you build a city. I haven't had any ethics charges filed against me.
Mr. Ponton.
So you your allegations are false.
No, sir. Uh, if we can go into your invoice, uh, we can go into your previous invoices with the the other council. There were numerous times when your invoices did not get billed, did not get paid in full because of overbilling. You've had the issue of overbilling for the city of Pecos also. But you know what? This is just my reason as to why I'll not be voting. Because you know as well as I do, that when you walked into here this after, this evening, you have the votes you need to walk out of here as city attorney. My right as a councilperson is to let these people know why I will not be voting for you. I will not be giving a just because I gave reasons as to why I do not back you as city attorney.
I recall you complaining about Sandy Wilson's ten thousand dollar a month bill.
Okay.
Sandy Wilson's bill was was gone, did go through council and was okay.
On the border. Address the council on your comments, please.
Uh, I think, yeah, I think Mr. Ponton.
That's why I said point of order for both. Okay, because this is your discussion.
Yes, it is my discussion. Thank you, Mr. Ponton.
Okay, anything else?
This is the agenda for the public to speak. I have the opportunity to speak. It's legally in the agenda and your attorney should know. If we have the opportunity to speak for public comments, your attorney should know this or would love to have this public comment section open up to the public.
You know what? I will allow this.
Almost, uh, council, good evening, Oscar Cobles, uh, work five. It was almost hard for me to come here again and the issues at stake. A lot of us know what public uh, interest is and special interest. And here for a time, there's been a a pattern here from Pecos to Alpine and several things that are going on within Presidio County. And at this moment, uh, yes, I agree with Councilman uh, Salas, there are several issues. I was watching the recording and y'all can call up the city of Pecos. I was watching the recording where Mr. Ponton was gonna be discussed in the city of Pecos in their meeting. I watched the whole uh, in live recording. He rushed up there and resigned at public comment because he was gonna be discussed at an executive session. And for a fact, this should be tabled or y'all should consider not to rehire him. I go back to my original words, my decisions a while back for the community of Alpine, not for me. There's no accountability and there's no transparency. And I pray and believe that here soon, the state bar will intervene as well on Mr. Ponton. Because we can have titles, but what's the use if there's no integrity? So today I wanna clarify what Ms. Sala said. I wanna clarify what this community has gone through and gonna continue to go through our police department, what they suffered and suffered the consequences badly. And also realize this, that the city of Alp- the city of Pecos, give them a call. Look at those archived footage. Just look at what he's done with her. Visit with him. Because the moment that y'all further this and go according to whoever put him on the agenda, y'all are gonna be held responsible for the community as well. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, any more discussion? Seeing none, so let's hold on. All those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. All those oppose. Okay, motion carries in. Let's go to item number seven.
Discuss, considering a short-term specialty, short-term rental special use permit application, A two oh two East Lockhart, owner of record is Jay Myers. Four oh nine North Fifth, owner of the record is Larry and Shirley Nichols. And three oh four and a half E Avenue B, owners of record is Larry and Shirley Nichols.
Oh, entertain a motion, please.
I move that we discuss, consider and approve short-term rentals, special use permanent applications at two oh two East Lockhart, owner of record is Jay Myers. Four oh nine North Fifth, owners of records is Larry and Shirley Nichols. And three and a four, three oh four and a half East Avenue B, owners of record Larry and Shirley Nichols.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second? Okay, got a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Oh, black sign, motion carries. Thank you all very much. Okay, let's move on to item number ten, see council, uh, comments and answers, and I'll sort on my right side. Chris, no comment, okay?
No comment.
None. Judy? Any comments?
Next time, I'm here. No comment.
Okay, thank you all very much. I wanna thank everybody for coming here. And the only comment I have is be safe because there is a rise on the, on the COVID, okay? We had our first COVID meeting this uh, morning to kind of discuss and be proactive. There's not much we can uh, do about it because it's not mandated. We're just asking the public to take the proper steps that we did at the onset. And let's nip it in in the butt because I do not wanna be isolated for another year, and I don't think you guys are either. Okay, so let's just be safe out there and practice good hygiene. Okay. So as we're gonna go into executive session. The city council reserves a right to adjourn into executive session anytime during the course of this being to discuss any items, any matter listed on the posted agenda. Above as authorized by the Texas government code section five five one dot oh seven one consulting with adjournment. Five five one dot oh seven two deliberations about real property, five five one dot oh seven three deliberations about gifts and donations. Five five one dot oh seven four personal banners. And five five one oh seven six deliberation about security devices and five five one that oh eight six economic development. I'll entertain a motion to come to come out of the regular session.
I make a motion, recess.
Okay, is there a second? Okay, I think we need discussion, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, motion carries and we'll go out of executive session. What's the time?
Six fifty three.
Six fifty three. Okay. Y'all wanna take a recess or? Okay, so we're gonna take a five minute break.
I got one question that's kind of off the record. We were hoping to be on the agenda for the approval of one of our temporary oh four oh five.
We can't.
I just want, I might point that if there's a fire marshal problem or something, we wanna do whatever we can do.
Okay, you would have to just, if you'd have to discuss it with the city manager after the meeting. Yes, sir. Thank you. Okay, five minute break. Okay, five-minute break. Okay, five-minute break.